August 17, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please call the roll?
Ellen, here.
Ellen?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Hinzal?
Here.
Olsend?
Here.
Hensel?
Here.
Fly?
Here.
You have a plan.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and join me in the pledge. Dr. Cartwright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest court of liberty and justice.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. We have the next agenda item, which is a workshop. This is the addendum to the Oshkosh Area School District 2020-21 School Year Plan, and that will be led by Dr. Cartwright and other members of the executive team. I just want to comment on that as we get rolling here. Many of us school board members have received numerous emails, text messages, phone calls on the topic of returning to school. And in my seven years on the board, I've never seen such confusion over what is on a board agenda. We are here for one purpose tonight and one purpose only. That is to talk about adding a piece, so it's an addendum, to the Oshkosh Area School District 2020-21 School Year Plan, which was adopted by the board on August 5, 2020. That's the only reason we're here tonight. We are not here to revote on what we did on August 5. We are only here to talk about the metrics or the measures that will be used to determine -- to be determined by Dr. Cartwright if we need to make a change in which one of those models, models 1, 2, 3, or 4, a particular level or the entire district might be asked to operate under for some period of time. So I just want to clarify that so that people understand why we're here tonight. Okay? With that, let's go with Dr. Cartwright and the team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrisak. I'm going to ask for Ms. Conrad to go ahead and get us started right away here at the beginning of our presentation, as there are two elements in this presentation per board request to make sure we do a high-level overview, and then the second is to talk about the addendum and what that may look like.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Julie Conrad, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for the Oshkosh Area School District. As we put together the school year plan for 2020-21, we had three commitments, and that was to safety, flexibility, and learning. And so our plans reflect that learning piece, the safety piece, and the flexibility piece. So the 2021 School Year Plan allows for schools to move between instructional models ranging from face-to-face all the way through virtual as needed. So many of you have seen this graphic before, and this graphic is out on our website, along Shared with Families. In addition to that, it's been requested to have a one-page overview of this model with additional information because, you know, explaining this all the time, how do we have it on one page? And so, once this is posted, we will ask the public, and we will be sending out to families for the communication with this one-page overview out. So looking at the different models. Model number one is what we think of as traditional in-person learning. In other words, schools are returning to regular operations. We are not ready to go into Model 1. Model 2 is modified in-person learning, where students are attending school in person five days a week with the safety precautions and protocols that are outlined in the 2021 School Year Plan and Handbook that is also posted on the website and has been shared with our community and our families. Model 3 is hybrid learning. And what that means for the Oshkosh Area School District is that students will have a mix of in-person and remote or virtual learning. The Oshkosh Area School District has chosen to use an A-B model, where students, if you are in the A group, will come to school face-to-face on the A day, and on the B day would be virtual, and then that would be continuing and rotating. When we put together the A-B within our student information system, students will start with their families or their households, and students in a household or children in one household will be assigned to the same group so that families have the opportunity to stay together and to plan. This includes if we go with elementary, middle school, and high school. So if you have a child that's -- if you have children that are in all three levels, all the children would be on the same group, A group or B group. Model 4 is when all learning takes place remotely or all learning takes place virtually. It's important to note that different from the spring, when we were in our safer-at-home orders, is that our classrooms and buildings in the entire district actually will be open to students to be served during that time because the buildings, the brick-and-mortar buildings, aren't actually shut down. What we are doing is we are going virtual to add even more space and safety precautions. It's not safe at that time to gather largely within our classrooms. And then the last piece outside of all four models is our OASD E-Academy, where families have elected to be 100% virtual the whole entire school year and not move between models as the district goes through the criteria in just a few minutes to say how we will choose which model we're going to be in. So if a family is in 100% virtual, they will be virtual with dedicated E-Academy teachers from the Oshkosh Area School District for the whole entire school year. An E-Academy is really meant for families that do not want to move through the models, that they want to have consistency within their school year, and may have health concerns or have family members that are immune compromised and know that they do not want to be moving through the models at that time. It should also be noted that as we move through these instructional models, this is not like we are doing in the spring, where we were trying to maintain skills as we were doing safer-at-home and at-home learning. We are going into new learning. We are going to be accelerating, not remediating, and we are going to be making sure that students are engaged in new learning, which means attendance will be taken, which means that we will be looking at letter grades or scores, feedback, and assessments, just like if this was a regular school year. So, Dr. Cartwright, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Conrad. Also, board members, to let you be aware, as well as general public, because we are publishing this information, in your packet is a copy of -- you should have a one-pager. And this is what the one-pager will look like, just to help simplify what the different models are as far as explanation. For this next portion of our presentation for you today, we'd like to draw attention to a couple things I think is very important. So for tonight, the purpose of this board meeting is to either approve or not approve, or you can, of course, amend as well. What we have put together, it is the print version of this document right here. It is titled "The OSAD 2020-21 School Year Plan Addendum." However, a lot of this information is usually represented a little bit clearer when you can see that in a visual format. Therefore, you also have in your packet, and it's also been published, is a one-page instruct -- is basically, it's called the Oshkosh Area School District Instructional Models Matrix. Again, I want to emphasize that the purpose of this document is for a visualization so that people can have a better understanding of what are the things that we're looking to make decisions off of. And it is a fluid document as well, because as the Oshkosh Area School District receives additional data, which we are anticipating to have some additional data coming to us in the future, we'll be able to determine what is the data that would be most appropriate to add to this model and then update this model as well. So going into the details here, if you'll also notice, I'll just very briefly go over the different columns that you're seeing there. Under the criteria, you'll see that we're taking a look at the Winnebago County Health Department testing percent positivity rate. You'll also see where we're looking at the boundaries for the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries, community burden, so it's specific to the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries. Then we break it down into age groups. And the age groups is also important because they fairly or loosely align with elementary school, middle school, and high school. You'll notice on high school also, we're putting, of course, "to be determined," and the reason is just because after conversation with the Winnebago County Health Department, they are going to be adjusting the metrics, and rather than ages 15 to 19, it will be 15 through 17. And the purpose behind that is because many of the 18- and 19-year-olds are not necessarily students within the Oshkosh Area School District. We'll be discussing a little bit about the testing capacity tonight, as well as contact tracing capacity, student absenteeism, and a substitute teacher fill rate. You'll notice in the second column, we've identified what are the targeted standards or benchmarks. In other words, what is our ultimate goal that we're trying to accomplish? So within the Winnebago County Health Department with the testing percent positivity rate, we're looking to accomplish less than a 5% community spread, or a positive rate, as you might say. Within the boundaries, our goal always is going to be a low burden. That's for our overall community as well as for our students, because a low burden means that we're not having as many cases being identified. Within the testing capacity, of course, what we're ultimately trying to accomplish is actually -- actually, the Winnebago County Health Department ultimately is trying to accomplish is ensuring that all symptomatic persons have available to them COVID-19 testing. Within the contact tracing, it's again looking at the initial contact, once a person has a positive result, and then followed up with individuals that they have been in contact with. That student absenteeism rate, this data, just for transparency purposes for the next two columns, comes from the 2018-19 school year, not the 2019-20 school year, and the reason on that is because we were looking for a typical school year rather than an atypical school year. So the student absenteeism rate from the 2018-19 school year for the Oshkosh Area School District, district-wide, was less than 6% on average. It ranged anywhere between -- the attendance rate was between 94% and 95%. And then for our substitute fill rate for that same time period, we had a district-wide average of 89.5%, so we were looking to at least achieve that. The next column from there are current trends or projections. And so it identifies for you what those current trends are, and we're going to come back and revisit this, if that's okay, to get into particulars. It's going to let you know in consultation, the next two columns are in consultation with the Winnebago County Health Department, what is our current status. Much of this data comes directly from their reports, but then some of this is also via conversation in order for us to ensure we have the right data. And then again, in consultation with the Health Department, our benchmarks for what are the models. So you'll see, based off of what our current trends are, in combination with current status, tells you what model we are meeting at that point in time. It is a combination of all of these criteria. It's not one particular criteria, per se, that is going to drive what the district administration recommendations are going to be, or decisions, I should say, what the decisions are going to be as to how to pursue going forward. So understanding the Oshkosh Area School District Instructional Models Matrix, or the addendum, as you might say, there's some fundamental points that we want to make sure that our community as a whole understands. We -- our ultimate goal for the school district is to provide in-person instruction to the maximum ability while providing for a safe environment. That is our number-one goal. Decisions regarding which instructional model to use are guided through the use of objective criteria in conjunction with the Winnebago County Health Department conversations regarding the criteria. And the criteria may change based upon current data made upon -- made available to the district. This is very important. Again, I want to emphasize to you, what we're trying to do is take the verbiage and give it to you in a visualized manner or an illustrative manner in order to understand what we're talking about. That's why, please understand, that this may change. These visualizations may change based upon the current data that is made available to the district. Beyond the criteria that's listed within this matrix are some additional things that we have to take into consideration. For example, pandemic conditions. If we find that the rate increases suddenly, or we find that the impact that's happening within our students and that there's a lot of community spread that's happening and it's at a hazardous-type level, what people have to understand is even though we're going to be committed to reviewing this every two weeks and updating this and putting it out to the public, that the administration needs the flexibility to make a decision right away if there is something that is going to the detriment of the district. Legal requirements. We also are taking into account that there is a possibility that there may be orders that are placed upon the school district and that we will remain within legal compliance of those legal requirements. Results produced under district policy. Any type of relevant changes within the district policy or in matters that affect policy may be cause for review or even changes within the instructional models. It could be including looking at fluctuations in staffing levels require us to have a change. It may be that the -- we are experienced with the current instructional models indicate that learning and academic performance have not met our -- the district's expectations. It could be that there are inequities for certain groups of students may have or may develop that require adjustment to the current model being used. So those are some of the other things that we're taking a look at on an ongoing basis as well. And then last but not least would be technology considerations. And technology considerations is, you know, sometimes we have some challenges or limitations, and Dr. Gunlock is very good at making sure he leads his team going forward. But if we're finding that there are some students who maybe are having some internet struggles and we're not able to overcome that, taking a look at our model and adjusting accordingly for them. So continuing forward, I know a lot of times, again, the criteria that we have listed on here, I just want to remind everyone, this is our initial criteria. This is what we are using right now, all the way until we get through the first two-week cycle of school at the beginning of the school year. I know I keep saying this, and I apologize, but I want to make sure we're very clear that if a significant change occurs between now and the beginning of school, and the local data, administration will be responsive to any needed revision in our instructional models being used. All decisions with -- which instructional model to be used, or it may be specific to a school level, elementary school, middle school, or high school, or it may be district-wide, and it is in collaboration with the Winnebago County Health Department to ensure a safe environment. And last but not least, as I've mentioned before, I greatly appreciate the support of the Winnebago County Health Department in our collaboration and our partnership because we work very closely in order to put this document together for illustrative I want our community to understand, as well as our staff members to understand, that local district data, as well as Winnebago County data, are reviewed in an ongoing manner. This is not something where we look at it in two weeks, put it down, come back to it in two weeks, and revisit a decision. This is something that is ongoing, and the data are reviewed utilizing what we call a trend approach, is looking at what, if we were to look at data over the past two weeks, because then you're starting to get a trend. The report that the Winnebago County Health Department puts together for our all school districts within the Winnebago County, that each report is an accumulation of two weeks' worth of data. So if we look at two different reports, in essence, you have three weeks of data that you're reviewing at that point in time. Trend data typically is when you're looking at combinations of three or more. Trend data review will be taken a look in two-week cycles. This allows us to provide some notice to parents and caregivers if a change in the instructional model are needed. The Instructional Models Matrix will be updated every two weeks with the first available update on September 10. By using a two-week update process, parents and guardians are made aware of any potential changes for the following week. It is, again, extremely important to note that if the data has significant change between the two-week update process, we will respond accordingly. I want to get into just some, as you might say, operational definitions, or what do we do these things mean in layman's terms, as to the best of our ability. The Winnebago County Health Department testing percent positivity. What that means in essence is of the residents in Winnebago County who have a COVID-19 test, the number represents the percent of individuals who have had a positive result. So it's of the Winnebago County residents who have gone and taken a test, what percent of those individuals had a positive result. What is important to note is a significant difference between the August 5 meeting and today's meeting is that the trend has trended upward. When the original -- when we originally spoke with the board, the projections were around in the 3% areas. At this point in time, they are at a 4.3, and they are rising. For the Oshkosh Area boundaries, community burden. So that's within the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries. The number represents the case rate per 100,000 people in the past two weeks. I'm going to go back to it again with the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries, community burden. Back on August 5, that burden was at a moderately high level. We are currently at the high level. Looking at this within each of the age ranges, so it is the same -- what we're doing here is the rate for each age group is determined by the number of new confirmed cases during the past two weeks divided by the Oshkosh Area School District geographic boundary and multiplied by 100,000. For the elementary school ages, so ages grouped 5 through 9, when we made the -- when we were talking back on August 5, that burden rate was at moderate. It has now, for the past two reports, been at the moderately high rate, so it isn't -- and that is where it is holding right now. For the middle school age range, we actually are seeing a decrease from last week's report to the report from there, and they are currently at the moderate rate. For the high school age range, that is to be determined because this is going to be new data coming forward in the near future. A lot of people like to know, well, exactly where is the district pulling this information? And so for visualization purposes, what I was trying to do for the general public so that they could see where we're getting this, and you'll also note on the lower right-hand side that the source is indicated on here, so that way if anyone has a need in the future to look at our document and wants to click on the link, they can have access to that. But within this report, what happens is there are a few areas that we actually take a look at, but you'll notice that there are three areas for which we are reporting. The first thing that we're looking at is we're typically looking on the very first page. It breaks it out by every school district within Winnebago County. It also gives what is the county rate within that jurisdiction, and then where -- what is it for Wisconsin as a whole? So if you can visually see this a little bit, this was the data that we were using when we met prior, you know, before, well, when we met on August 5, whereas this is your current data right now. And there, you'll notice the brighter blues, or I should say, the deeper color blues means that there's a higher risk. So the more you progress with the blues, the higher the risk there is based on their report. The second area that we take a look, as far as criteria is concerned, is we're also looking at the burden rate for itself by the school district. And by the way, on this slide, on this slide, we do have for you a key as to what the shades of blue mean. One of them, and some people may say it's shades of green, too, so, depending upon how you see that. But again, taking a look, when we were looking back originally on August 5, seeing what the ranges were, in fact, we even, at the middle school level, we even had a moderate level at that point in time compared to where we are, excuse me, it was moderately --
Hi.
-- high on the July 30 report, my apologies, and where we've gone down at this point to a moderate level. In addition to this, these two charts are included in here, and then a chart that gives you an explanation of what the color codes. We also take a look at some of the trends over a period of time. So this helps give us -- gives us an idea of where are we looking like within the age groups over a period of time, week by week by week, in order to help us have a better understanding of what the trends may be within the data itself. Going back to the criteria that's identified in this illustrative matrix is the Winnebago County Health Department testing capacity. And so that's looking at the availability of COVID-19 tests for individuals with COVID-19 symptoms. Currently, the capacity is falling. However, the Winnebago County Health Department does have a plan that they're working on at this point in time. I'm not privy to announce that, but I can assure the board that they have some ideas and that started some actions in order to address this concern. The Winnebago County contact tracing capacity, again, it's reaching cases within 24 hours. And once you've reached your case, and the contact tracing list has been developed in 24 hours after that in contacting those individuals. Currently, they're at the high ability in order to complete this type of tracing, and they're in stable condition. Student absenteeism rate, I explained a little bit prior to. This will be completed once we get through or right close to that second week of school in order for us to start gauging where we are. Likewise, with our substitute teacher fill rate. So looking at this, before we get into this next slide, I would like to welcome questions that the board may have related, again, to the addendum that is up for vote.
I have one. Dr. Hinzal?
Mrs. Olsend.
All right. I don't -- it doesn't have directly to do with the addendum, but I do have a question. If we can go back to what Ms. Conrad was discussing about the individual models. A quick question I have is on there, it does show, I've got one right here. It does show that for like level or model, I apologize, for model 4, it shows that classroom, building, and entire district may transition to Model 4. But can we, for the hybrid, for Model 3, will that be looked at as individual schools also?
So any of these models will be considered at a school level or a district-wide level dependent upon the combination of the criteria that we're examining.
Awesome. Okay. Because I know it only set up for one, so I was just making sure that all of them can go. So one school, because we have 14 elementary schools, I think, so we have, we can, one school can do something and the other 10 don't. So it just depends.
It's going to be dependent upon the data that we currently have, hence why originally the --
Awesome.
-- what we had discussed was for elementary to be in the in-person, five days a week. It was dependent upon the data at that point in time.
Okay, good. Another question I had is, I'm getting a lot of questions from the community, and I'm hoping this can be answered. Why did Oshkosh choose the A-B day versus the like Monday, Wednesday off, or Monday, Tuesday off, Wednesday, go back Thursday, Friday? Can we, I know we talked about it two weeks ago, four weeks ago, but could we just have a quick reminder of that?
Absolutely. So we'll --
We're getting a lot of questions about that. I am, at least.
Certainly. And a lot of it has to do with ensuring that we have an ongoing contact with our students because within an A-B day, so let's say A-B is Monday, Tuesday. We have seven days a week. They're in person Monday, Tuesday. You don't see them for five days before they come back to the following Monday. But now, you should in a virtual environment, but then the follow-up that may be needed, especially for some of your groups that may have more of a need for direct instruction, you start losing that ability when you're in that virtual environment, sometimes, not always. And so by alternating the days, it's ensuring that every other day, minus the weekend, a student is having some type of in-person instruction, and the teacher is able to identify more rapidly if a student is not keeping up. That's one thing. A second thing, it also holds a little bit of accountability to our students to make sure that on their virtual day, they're getting their work done because they know the very next day they're coming into class and have to have it completed and prepared in order to have the instruction that's going to be occurring. Ms. Conrad, anything else?
Yep. The other piece behind that is what that --
Yep, the other piece behind that is with that calendar, when you put in AB, we can predict out which day will be an AB for our whole school calendar for the whole entire year. So when moving through models, going from like model, like let's say that we are in model 2 and we need to go into model 3, wherever we are in the calendar, it's already scripted out where we can pick up in the AB groups. And so by, so that allows us the flexibility by school, by level, by district that we can pick up and maintain that contiguous rotation.
Okay, all right, that's all, thank you.
Does anyone else from the board, Mrs. Solaji?
Yeah, I actually have a follow-up question to that because I agree that was a very common theme in the emails that we received. I value the district's approach to make sure we see kids three days, one week and two days a next. There was one parent, most of the parents that brought up concern with this actually mentioned that their concern is with childcare. That it will be easier for them to find childcare if it's consistently the same two or three days each week. I don't want to recommend any changes or anything, but I did feel that one email I just wanted to bring up, the recommendation was that students would have the same either Monday, Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday, and then rotating Fridays. Again, with the concern being that then it would be easier for parents to plan childcare because they would know every week which two days they would need it. So I just want to mention that email and that recommendation.
Any other, any other board comments or questions at this time? Okay, and back to Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you. Continuing forward, this is a contingent slide. So I want to publicly announce it's a contingent slide, but we also want to be transparent to our community so that they understand what does this actually mean that, you know, in translation with the board making a decision tonight. So the big word on this slide is if the Oshkosh area school district instructional models matrix, I should say, not the matrix, but the plan addendum, let me clarify that. If the plan addendum is approved by the Board of Education, then the Oshkosh area school district executive team will apply the current model, which is what's visualized in this matrix. If we apply the current model, there are a few things we have to take into consideration. Based on data that has changed since the beginning of August, a change in the model for the elementary school is needed. The community spread has increased to 4.3, or I should say, the positivity rate has increased to 4.3% and the burden rate for elementary age students has been at the moderately high category for two consecutive weeks. All school levels need to be on model 3, the hybrid for the beginning of school. An update of the matrix and any additional data that are relevant will occur every two weeks with communication following the revision, if any. The first scheduled update would be on September the 10th with an implementation, implementation date of September 14th for the next two-week cycle. Again, this is subject to change if the local data indicate a need to go into virtual floor, which is virtual. So I can't emphasize that enough, that if, if our rate and other criteria warrant it, the administrative team will move in that direction if needed. However, based on the data today, that is not a need. Ms. Conrad.
So with communication, we will be updating our Oshkosh area website. We have a dedicated school year plan webpage that we encourage you to look at and to visit for very specific information, including the handbook that outlines in details, safety protocols and all of our plans. I believe it's approximately 35 pages, if you would like to look at that. In addition, there are one pager, the plan, the instructional models on one page will also be posted to this website page, so you're welcome to go there. In addition, our families have indicated email, phone and text messages inside of their infinite campus parent portal. So families and staff will receive an email, phone and text message through that parent portal as they have indicated with updates. And please ensure that as a family or a staff member in the Oshkosh area school district, that your contact information and communication preferences are up to date so that we know the best way to contact you and in the way that you would like to be contacted. So going back to this, we really encourage our families to become familiar with the school plan. And so there is the, from the board meeting, there is an updated slide deck or all of the pieces that were presented to the board for the school year plan. There's the actual district handbook. They're available for anyone to take a look at with additional links and information. And then note that we will continue to update the school year plan based on what happens tonight if the addendum is, is voted in. And we will keep adding new additions and we will note that with a red asterisk if an addition or something new has been added.
And I'm going to just comment very quickly to our families. I would strongly encourage you to please look at the Oshkosh area school district frequently asked question document because we are purposely trying to keep this as a living document as we're receiving questions from families or noticing that there are trends within the questions to ensure that we have ongoing communication that are available to our parents and our caregivers.
Mr. Peschel, Mr. Peschel.
Thank you. I guess since it sounds like you're making a suggestion that we move from model 2 to model 3 for elementary school students. I got, I have some questions related to that, so. And they're not necessarily questions that I think can be answered within the matrix, so.
May I, Mr. Peschel? I apologize, I just wanted for clarity. The board is not voting on the, on which model to go for tonight. The board is voting on the addendum. And if the board passes the addendum, then the executive team, our decision is to do exactly what you were talking to do. My apologies, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, so. So like every other board member, I've, I've received literally hundreds of emails, text messages and phone calls related to this, specifically focused on the elementary school side of things, not necessarily focused on the middle school or the high school side of, of this. The concern that I have by, by the acceptance of this is that it essentially doesn't take into part any type of social distancing measures within, within that, within that model for elementary school students. And I know that that's not a metric that we measure. It's a practice that we, that we put into our, into our classes. The concern that I have by doing that is that it puts a focus onto families, comes back to that childcare issue. And even if we were to suggest a different day mix on that, a majority of families who are elementary school students are still always going to have that daycare issue, no matter what. And that's, that's, that's kind of my concern here is that by doing that, we're putting, we're also putting a focus on the families to find that safe person to be home on those, on those, on those B-days or whatever that may be. And then we're also potentially putting those persons who are close to our family, could be our grandparents, uncles, stuff like that, who have been maybe practicing social distancing and want to, you know, be helpful and part of the family. This, this challenges that, 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 that regulation of all of that. And I think that's, that's, that's a concern that I've been hearing a lot from elementary school families is that they don't have this concern when it comes to their junior high or their high school. And, and I, I don't have an answer, I mean, I have suggestions, but I can't, I can't ask them here actually, so. But how do we address that issue by doing that? Because we're, we're, we're moving a different burden onto our families that's, that's, that's going to create more challenges as it relates to, I would say, the community burden of COVID-19 in our community. So that's an action of ours. Our board, you know, making that, taking that step is that by doing that, we could be potentially adding increases and putting other, other people at risk by doing that as well. So just a thought.
If I may on that?
Please.
May I respond just a little bit? The AB days for elementary school does take into consideration the social distancing. So I respectfully have a different opinion.
Please elaborate on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, because when you have half the students in your classroom, now you're not having to use up as much space in order to distance your students within the classroom. So that's, that is one element to take into consideration. The second thing I would like to, to state is that, please know that type of recommendation at the elementary level does not go lightly, not by a stretch of the imagination. Because I completely understand and respect the concern that you are stating related to childcare. Again, it's trying to find that best match as to what's in the best interest of, of students and keeping them in a safe environment. And look, and, but making that determination based on objective criteria rather than emotion. And so I think that's important to, to note as well. And the AB model has always been an option and could have been applied to elementary school at any point. Likewise with virtual school, you know, if we have to go into a virtual model at any level, that also remains on the table. And that goes back to what I originally started with on this presentation is our primary goal is to put our students into in-person learning in the safest environment possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel and Dr. Cartwright. Is there anyone else from the board who has a question? Mrs. Carlin, I believe, and then Mrs. Olmstead?
I just had a quick question. Dr. Cart, it said we were going, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Conrad did. All of you are saying that we're going to go back and look at this on September 10th. Is it going to be every two weeks on a Thursday then? Because that's when Winnebago sends out their information? Okay, so it's going to be on that Thursday cycle?
Currently, our report comes out every Thursday. I'm trying to coincide our actual updating of the matrix to go along with the data set that we receive when we, when we get that report. Now, if they change their day, then we will adjust accordingly as well.
Oh, Winnebago changes when they report out, then we would adjust according to them. So the 10th is because that's when Winnebago gives us all the, got it.
Currently, they, they release a report every Thursday.
Okay, oh, every Thursday, and then we're looking at it because we're looking at two trends.
For a two-week span, because then it would include three weeks, at least three weeks worth of data that'll help you to make trend analysis.
Got it, okay, thank you, okay.
Mr. Peschel, oh wait, I'm sorry, Mrs. Carlin had her hand up and then Mr. Peschel next. Okay, I guess Mrs.
First, I would like to sincerely thank everybody who pulled together this data for us. I understand a couple of you sacrificed your weekends. So I would like to sincerely thank you for pulling this together for us tonight. I really appreciate your work. I did have one question regarding what happens when a child gets COVID because we heard from our first meeting that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we get COVID in our schools. And I've had parents contact me and say, you know, well, my child have to stay home for 10 days. I can't afford to stay home for 10 days if my child gets COVID because they have to work. So that's a whole other issue. And so I'm just wondering, when we have COVID in one of our schools, what is the process? Will it close? And I'm, I'm reading the FAQ right now and it kind of says, you know, it depends on the level of exposure and how many kids. And we, we're not notifying families if the COVID, if there's a COVID outbreak in schools, we're kind of...
So there's a variety of limitations that are put onto us because of legal, legal reasons. So for example, we cannot release the name of a student because then I not only have a HIPAA violation, I have a Family Education Rights and Privacy Act violation, both of which are federal laws. Instead, what, what we have been advised through legal counsel from multiple counsel, legal counsel, so it's more than just board legal counsel, is what is allowable as far as advisement and what is not allowable per advisement. So what you are seeing in our handbook is reflective of the advisement that we received as to how notification is going to work. Typically, you want to try to localize it as much as possible. Oftentimes, the, the county health department will give you the guidance as to who should be advised and ensuring that you get that, that out there. You had, the first part of your comment was a question related to the impact on students. If I may, I hate to put him on the spot, but we do have Mr. Guerin from the Winnebago Health Department who might be able to address that question much more specifically than what we are.
Just to be sure, answering the right question, it's, when we have a positive, what's the, what's the notification procedure? Is that correct?
Well, if we were going to close a school when COVID, what, what are we going to do when somebody in their classroom has COVID?
So, you know, this plan...
Excuse me, could you speak up just a little bit louder for those of us who are having trouble hearing you? Thank you.
So this plan really attempts to limit spread. I mean, the whole point of the plan is when there's a COVID positive person, that we're not spreading it any more than absolutely necessary. And so the social distancing, the physical distancing, you know, the AB, the mask wearing, those are all efforts to minimize spread so that we have the least number of close contacts possible when we have a positive student identified. And so if a student is identified as positive, we'll know that test result, we'll be in contact with that family immediately. And we will attempt to identify with that family and with the school who the close contacts are, if any. And then we'll make a recommendation based on the type of exposure if a self, self-quarantine is, is necessary. So unless we have multiple cases within a classroom, you know, a single case really shouldn't be that disruptive.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I guess I have a question on that. Is, is that covered in both the FAQ and in the handbook? What happens when there's a case in a classroom, whether that's a child or a, or student or a, an adult in the school?
Mr. Kamer. Thank you, Dr. Anzal.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have the, the protocol outlined in the handbook. Now, there are a lot of situations that, that could change the timeline that Ms. Carlin was talking about, but all that would be done in conjunction with the health department. But in terms of the, the general process that we would undergo, it's all outlined in there.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to, I guess it sounds like we're not going to close schools if there's an outbreak, that we're just going to kind of learn to live with it and wait and see how many kids might get it or...
I think the key word there is outbreak. And if, if there is a legitimate outbreak in the building, yeah, I, I think that's eventually what would happen. As, as Mr. Guerin said, it really depends on the case, the number of cases within a school or within a particular classroom. We'd want to, of course, contain it as quickly as we possibly could. And that's why the, the response rate of the health department is so important. I believe it's within 24 hours they're completing their contact tracing and making sure anybody who's been in close contact with that individual is self-quarantining themselves to hopefully limit that spread. But in terms of exact thresholds, in terms of how many cases would need to be present to close a school, that's something that, that we don't, we don't really have that number just because of it being situation-dependent.
Thank you, Mr. Kamer. Other questions or comments by board members? Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans?
I voted for this plan of operation because of its fluidity, that they can be switching back and forth. And it sounds like if things were standing right now, that wouldn't happen. I think it would be much more difficult... much more difficult if we were locked into one method for a month or two or three months and not being able to not have all these other options that we can move to as, as conditions change. And I also wanna thank everybody for their emails. Because it's a public record, they will be archived and kept forever. And it was, when it's something like this, you get these emails, it made me grateful that I wasn't trying to figure this out on my own, that I had six other board members that were working on this and administration staff. Knowing that I had six other people getting these same emails kind of made it easier for, for me to take some of the criticisms that were being sent. I think this is a very workable plan, and I plan on supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Garland, oh, excuse me, Mrs. Garner.
I just wanted to say that a lot of the parents have been feeling, you know, some anxiety, concern. There's a lot of uncertainty. And as we kind of like try to navigate our way through all of this, we're learning too. And so it's my hope that with this matrix, at least now, there is some certainty. And I'm hoping that parents now feel like they can start making decisions and feel as though they know something. Because up until tonight, it was still kind of like, well, you know, I think they're gonna go to school on the first, but I'm not really sure. Now it's like, okay, now I have some semblance of guidelines. And to know that the administration's gonna look at this every two weeks, so I know at least for childcare issues, I just gotta worry about the next two weeks, right? For better or worse, it's, it's better than what we had yesterday, right? Now today, we've got something. So it's my hope that this allays a little bit of those concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Olmstead.
I wanted to say thank you also to everyone who worked on the matrix. This is something I asked for last Wednesday night, that I feel if we had a matrix, if we had something in paper that this is where we're going, this is why we're doing it, this is where we'll be, it just puts some ease for myself, the community, parents, teachers, the staff, administration. So then it's easier for administration to make the decisions going forward. You know, this is, this is the administration's now. You know, when we move, this is Dr. Cartwright's and, and her team, this is what they're gonna use. And so I think to have that and to show what they're doing, I think it'll give them much more flexibility, much more support to be able to know why we're moving and when we're moving. So I, I definitely, I'll second what Mrs. Gardner had said too. So I just wanted to say thank you, because I know I asked for this last Wednesday, and it's Monday, so I can't even imagine how hard you guys worked on this. I just, my whole life has been reading emails lately, so I can understand what, you know, some of you guys have gone through to put this together, so I really appreciate that too.
Thank you, Mrs. Olmstead. Any other board member, Mrs. Solaji?
I also just wanted to say thank you. From the beginning, I have supported the plan and loved the fluidity of it. And our August 5th vote, I know I made an amendment, and part of that was because I didn't know how we were weighing the risks that we were sending our students to. And now with this amendment, amendam, I feel at peace that we have a, an approach that weighs the risks. And so I just wanna say thank you for this. It helps a lot. And I do wanna also say that I know that this makes some daycare struggles for our families. I recognize that, but I'm hopeful that like Allison said, that we'll all see that we take this two weeks at a time. And I'm hopeful that as a community, we can find solutions for that and make sure that we are all doing what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solaji. Mr. Peschel?
Thank you. I wanna come back to how, how the matrix came to be. Because I, what I observed was that there were several school districts across the state of Wisconsin. They had come out, they had, they had made their decisions, kind of like what we did. And then they started seeing numbers and looking at changes and, and doing all that. And we started seeing them changing their plan, right? So I guess I, my, my question is, how come school districts, not just our school district, school districts in general, were making these decisions without essentially having these matrix, matrices in place? Is there, is there, is there a reason, a rationale for that?
Dr. Cartwright?
I can't speak on behalf of other districts. What I couldn't, can tell you is that within our school district, these were data points that we were monitoring to begin with, because that's how we made our original decision, our original decision at the, back in August 5th. We've continued to monitor these matrix, and as I mentioned before, we're looking for trends and patterns on that. And when this past Thursday, after receiving the report, we more than likely would have moved in that direction, given the information, knowing that there was a board meeting tonight and that there had been a request to have an addendum and for it to be an outlined matrix, one that's public facing. That, that, that is, we wanted to have this board meeting first.
Okay. May I follow up?
Absolutely.
And I, I guess it just, from, from what I gathered, there, there was, there was information that we were kind of waiting for from, from our partners throughout the state of Wisconsin and, and locally. And even still locally, we got an email today saying we're still, we're still working on this stuff, right? So, I mean, we talked about fluidity within the schools. We're still, we're still just responding and creating these documents locally and, and these plans. So, I think I lost my question. So, give me a second. So, but I guess my point is, is that, that that's kind of what happens in this, in the fluidity of this, is that we are just kind of not flying by the seat of our pants. We're using the data that exists out there. We're now just getting to this point where, and many other school districts are, where they're getting to this point where they're creating these types of matrices, matrices on paper and utilizing them. And, and I think that's, I think one of the things that, that we also have to acknowledge is that we as a board responding to parents, children, students, students, parents, and teachers in regards to what information are we using to guiding our decisions or information that we're approving to guide your decision in, in the end, right? So because ultimately, we don't close, we don't make that decision. We, we've garnered you with that, you and your team, that responsibility to doing that. And so, so I do agree that this is, this is really good. But I, I wanna acknowledge that our school district isn't any different than any other school district that's been asking, parents and staff have been asking for this stuff to be solidified more. And so we thank you for your patience for doing that and, and telling us that. And thank you for creating it, all of you that put in the time over the weekend. It's definitely, makes it that much more transparent in regards to how we're do, how we're gonna move forward. And this document also shows that we're responsive to those that put us in these positions as well. So thank you for that.
Wonder if I could just jump in here for just a second to respond to Mr. Peschel. Under the federal constitution, education is a responsibility left to the states. And each state typically accept, I think there's one state that has a statewide system, or at least there used to be at least one like that. But most of them believe in the concept of local control. And so they, they allocate or allow each community that has a school system to decide on rules and so on. So if you look, for example, across the state of Wisconsin, there are some school districts that have a five-member board, some have a seven-member board, that's pretty common. And then there are others that have as many as nine members on their school board. And some elect by regions, and, and some elect at large, as we do. So when you, when you don't have direction from the state level, and I'm not trying to be critical of the state, but each school district in essence is allowed to make certain decisions or left to make certain decisions. And what to do with the, the question of how to reopen our schools, how to get our children back into the schools where we can provide the most services has been delegated or given to each school district to figure that out. The Department of Public Instruction had put forth a, a guidebook, which was required by the state legislature, that came out in late June. It had to be out by the 1st of July. It consists of a series of questions to ask at the building level and ask at the district level. But it's not very prescriptive in terms of what you might do. And there was an expectation that there would be some, some direction at the state level coming out last week dealing with health issues and some of these data points. But I don't think that has come out yet. This is, this is new, it's ever-changing, it's complex. And I credit Dr. Cartwright and her team for coming up with data points that they've been using all summer long. They've been monitoring this data, actually since March, I believe, and looking at how we can safely return our students and our staff to our schools. And I, I second what has been said here in terms of having some measurable data by which decisions will be made. And that was something that this board delegated to Dr. Cartwright on August 5th. That that's, we set, we set the tone, or, or I shouldn't say the tone, but we adopted a plan that's kind of like the policy, which is what we do. And then it's up to administration to administer that, and this is one more step in that process. So that's, that's how this works. So thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Solaji, I didn't mean to talk so long.
No, I'm glad that you got a turn to speak up. I just saw one more question I had written down that I'd be remiss if I didn't ask. I am hearing from parents that they want to know how will attendance be taken on the days that students are at home? I know we've, in the document, it talks about harmonious and asynchronous learning. So, for example, the specific question I got from a friend was that when his kids are at home, they will likely be at grandma's, he doesn't have the internet. And so they wouldn't get to their schoolwork till they return home to mom and dad after working hours. So how will attendance be marked for those kids that day?
Yep, correct. So for students that are in grades six through 12, we will show them, we'll do the routines and procedures, and we'll show them the process for checking into their class via Infinite Campus on the day that they are virtual, within a hybrid. So the A day or B day that's designated that they're virtual. Or in Model Four, when we're virtual, they will check in each day. The check-in will open at like midnight and close at, wait, excuse me, would open at 12:00 AM and close at 11:59. So if it's asynchronous that particular day, because it's in the A B piece, they could be checking in during that day. So that would take care of the whole grandma, grandpa piece. For our littles, we're going to have to have family and teacher help to be able to do the attendance or check-in process. And we will clarify that, yes.
Would it be similar that they could check in at 2:00 in the afternoon as opposed to?
Yes, yes.
Right, it has to be right at 8:30 or something in the morning?
Oh, correct. And also when we are in virtual Model Four, there will be times that the teacher will be synchronous. They may be live with their students, and so that's another way to be able to check in. With an E Academy, which remembers outside the four models, but with an E Academy, students and families will have a schedule for that week with their teacher about when they will be checking in, when they will be live, when they will be synchronous. And there will be an expectation that they are live or checking in during that time, based on their schedule.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Mrs. Carlin?
Somebody asked me this the other day, and I wasn't exactly sure. Why did we not go to the live teaching, virtual, online right away? I mean, why wasn't that an option, I guess?
Are we talking about this, this spring when we were at, at-home learning?
Yes, like if they're, they're gonna go live, then the kids will go on their computers at the same time and, and stay at the same time live. So you're all doing it together like a normal school day.
So just as Mr. Peschel had said, that we are learning as we're going along here. When we started with at-home learning in the spring, we were anticipating to be in at-home learning for 14 school days, or two weeks, right? And we ended up being in at-home learning for 52 days. And so with that, we had adopted a model along with other school districts in our region, was that we were trying to maintain skills and make sure that our high schoolers got their credits towards graduation. And so with that, we were trying to do consistency, planned curriculum for things that in our classrooms were designed to be taught in person or face-to-face. And we were trying to take and repackage that and shift it so that we could deliver it virtually. So for some things, we could be doing that, and some teachers absolutely had the capacity to do, you know, Zoom, there was many children doing Zoom morning meetings, right? Across our district during that time. And so it really depended on the curriculum, the capacity, et cetera. What has changed now going into the fall is this will not be like at-home learning that we had in the spring. For example, in grade six through 12, we just pushed out our Canvas 2.0 Effective Teaching and Learning Practices Professional Development that our staff are now engaged in right now, where it's talking about how do we set up and engage in that relationship-building instruction so that we are accelerating that, remediating new learning within that? And that includes synchronous, interactive, student-engaging pieces.
I just wanna remind the board that we are talking about the addendum, the matrix. So that's all we're noticed for this evening. Are there any other questions or comments about the addendum? The workshop that we've just been discussing? Anything related to the addendum, the matrix? Mr. Peschel?
Thank you. My question is actually for, for Mr. Guerin, if you'd like to come up. So, Mr. Guerin, I, my question relates to the testing capacity of the district, because I, I look at that as being kind of an instrumental element in determining many of these, these benchmarks that we, that we kind of need to hit, right? Or not, that we don't want to hit them, right? We want to be in school. So, so let's just talk about the capacity. Just, you know, you, you've got a stage here to talk about what you need or what you don't have in relation to testing capacity. Can you, can you talk about that?
Sure. We've been working with the healthcare systems primarily on testing. And had worked with Aurora to set up a community testing site. We've had the National Guard here a few times now to assist with testing as well. Testing supplies right now are, are limited. And the healthcare providers, the healthcare systems are, are having a tough time getting the, the supplies that they need right now. So we're exploring other options for increasing testing in this area. And so those are in process right now. And we'll hopefully be able to, you know, reverse that trend that we're seeing, because our, our testing numbers are going down. That can have a negative impact on our ability to detect cases. And oftentimes, what you'll see when testing capacity is limited, that our percent positivity rate will go up. And we have been seeing that happen over the past few weeks. And so we're really hoping to get some more testing in the area here so we can, you know, turn the curve on that testing and, and make sure there's, you know, there's enough tests available so that at least everyone that's symptomatic can get a test. And it's not the case right now.
Okay. So you're looking to build capacity to do in that, to further in that. And, and I guess, so in relation as, as to that, so right now, it says that we meet the capacity for Model Three. Even correct, that's, that's what this says? Yes?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. So my, my question is, is that even though what you just said is that, is that we're having a hard time having the capacity to do, to do testing, we're, we're essentially starting school for all, you know, for all kids for a hybrid level. But we don't know that we have the capacity to, to be able to handle the potential testing that will, that, that may take place from putting kids back in school and having them interact with each other. So, I, I mean, this, this is two weeks away. Is there, is there anything that's coming down the pipe that we, you know, that, that should make us feel a little bit more comfortable about? make us feel a little bit more comfortable about the capacity to do those tests?
Sure. So, some of the things that we're looking at right now are requesting a permanent National Guard site here. We're also working with a new program, a pilot testing program that the state just made available with some funds that were allocated towards reimbursing for testing in addition to providing the test kits. So, that may bring on, we may be able to increase the capacity with hospital systems with that and/or bring on some additional potential providers with those funds, such as, you know, a pharmacy or another non-hospital location. And that's, that's where we're focusing our efforts right now.
Sure. So, I mean, even though our capacity for testing low, is lower in Winnebago County, we have the capacity for testing, just not to what we want it to be.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing hundreds of tests, you know, per week. So, it's, it's just that we know that we're in a difficult stretch here right now, that we expect change. You know, the trend in the number of cases locally and statewide over the past few weeks has dropped, but we do expect that to increase again.
And we do have, I mean, there isn't sites, if there isn't enough sites to handle capacity in Winnebago County, there are other sites available that you have to meet a criteria to be able to partake in, correct?
There are additional sites available. And then, and then we treat outbreaks separately. If we, you know, this is more routine testing. If we have an outbreak, we typically communicate with the state and can get a number of test kits very quickly to help address that outbreak, so.
Can, can you just define what an outbreak is?
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
I don't think this has anything to do with the addendum, so I actually think we're out of order in terms of what's on our resolution for tonight.
My questions are directly related to the testing capacity.
The testing capacity is in the matrix, and the current testing capacity is written in that matrix. And now, we're getting so far a field of what the public health department, and it is interesting. But I don't think that we're dealing with the addendum as it's being put before us tonight. So, I'm worried that we're actually not.
I, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with you. I'm just going to explain my rationale just a little bit more, because I believe my question, I'm trying to discuss the capacity as it relates to the opening of schools and how the responsiveness of testing is to our schools. I have one more question, it's actually more school-related. So, I'll, I'll, may I?
You may, but again, you're getting into some areas, I believe, that are really about implementation, which is the role of the administration, and not policy or, well, not policy, which is really the role of the board. So, you're kind of, as, as we learned from Ted Nitsky, we're kind of getting into the weeds deeper than we, we normally would as a board. But if you can bring it back to the matrix, then yes, your question would be appropriate.
Well, I want to, I want to bring it back to the school level, if I could. So, you, when you initially started, you said a health assistant. And is that a health assistant at a school level, or is that a health assistant, say, within the health department?
I'm not sure what you're referring to right now.
When you, when you first sat down, you talked about the people that would be engaging in, in the testing capacity. And one of the terms that you used was a health assistant.
I don't recall saying that, but, I mean, sorry. And if it helps, and if it helps, you know, with the conversation here, I don't believe that the current testing capacity alone is, is something that should prevent you from moving ahead with the plans that you have in front of you. So, in other words, I don't, I don't have a serious concern such that the testing capacity is at a place where it's like, hey, let's put the brakes on here. I don't feel that way, you know, from the health department perspective. So, if that's, you know, kind of what you're looking for, you know, it's, it's an important element, but certainly not one that should necessarily stop this plan at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, you?
Thank you, Mr. Peschall.
I have a question.
Is there any other board member who has a question or comment? Mrs. Carlin?
Thank you, Dr. Horazok. I had a question about reporting. What we're seeing now is some students are not reporting that they get COVID, right? And, because they don't want to be out of their sport for 10 days, or et cetera.
We do.
I don't know what the question is.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question? I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, there was no question there. There was no question there, actually. It's more just an observation of, we know it's going to be in our schools, and now some people are not reporting because they don't know if it means they won't be able to play their sport for 10 days if they get COVID. And I guess, what is the process? If they get COVID, do they have to quarantine for 10 days? Is that going to be our standard?
So, if someone gets COVID, which is identified by a positive test, the health department will give that test result, and those persons must isolate. The, the next step in that process is to identify if they've had any close contacts, and then we would ask them if we really define them as a close contact to self-quarantine. So, that's, that's our typical process.
It's 10 days, not two weeks now?
Self-quarantine would be, yeah, two weeks, 14 days.
Okay. And I just also wanted to say, Bob was not allowed to speak at our last meeting, so I think in an effort to be fully transparent, that we should be allowed to ask questions about opening, because we have not spoken about this in public, and we can only speak about it in public.
We, excuse me, Mrs. Carlin, we cannot speak about those things that are not publicly noticed, and so, we need to stick to the agenda.
Well, regarding the addendum, I think a lot of these questions are appropriate because we were not able to ask them at the last meeting, because there was so much confusion in what was happening at our last meeting. So, I just, I would like to thank Bob for his questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. There any other board member who wishes to make a comment or a question? Seeing none. Mr. Peschall, did you want to ask a question?
Um, no, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm just following the lead.
All right. Well, then, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, and I want to thank the administrative team for putting this together on exceptionally short notice. But I know the board felt that it was important to address the matrix and to make sure that the public had another opportunity to hear a summary of the four models of the plan that was adopted on August 5th. So, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is individually considered resolution. Number one, approval, let's see. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the addendum to the OASD 2020-2021 School Year Plan as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So, move.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Salaji. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please call the rule.
Evan?
Aye.
Governor?
Aye.
Horazok?
Aye.
Olmsted?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
I gather both prepared.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests this evening for future agenda items?
I do.
I'm sorry?
I do have a request.
All right, Mr. Peschall?
And I think part of it was that maybe I was preoccupied at a meeting a couple, a couple of weeks ago. I wonder if we could have a more fluid workshop, not fluid, fluid's the wrong word, and we've been using that word a lot. A more thorough breakdown of the handbook that we're using this year, just to kind of go over a little bit more high points. There's, there's lots of information that's embedded within that document that I think we are also getting lots of questions about as it relates to that, not just for our staff, but how things are handled for children as well. And I, in my opinion, it warrants a greater discussion about the how-tos if this happens and that happens and stuff. And, and I don't necessarily know that it has to be like a resolution, I'm talking like an actual workshop, where we're, we're getting a little bit more high points on. I'm not talking about, you know, us dictating that you need to do this and do that. I just think that in the uniqueness of our world right now, this is such a thorough and unique document, that I think it's worth us having some extra eyes on as it relates to how things are implemented for the next year. So, that's my suggestion.
So, if I could, I'm sorry, if I could just clarify, you're looking for a more thorough review of the handbook? Now, there are several handbooks out in the district. Could you clarify which handbook?
Give me a second. Can you put up, is the last?
It's right there. It's the little one.
One of my glasses.
Are you talking about the 34-page handbook, page handbook?
The school year district handbook?
That one, for the 2020-21 School Year Plan?
Forgive me, my glasses are fogging up.
I get that, truly.
It is the School Year Plan District Handbook final draft that I'm, that I'm the most interested in.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks for allowing me the time to get through my glasses.
No problem. Mrs. Olmsted, did you have something to add?
So, the, yeah, I just sort of clarifying. So, what you're asking is just to have the administration team just highlight the big stuff, like, we're not changing it, because we've already, obviously, we've already voted for it to be in plan, it's done.
Correct.
So, you just want them to highlight the high points, so what parents, so the parents know expectations and have like a, like a video of it or to show what it is?
I want to add to that, it's not just parents, it's also teachers and staff, and staff alike have a lot of questions, because we're moving at a rapid pace right now. And my goal here, Dr. Cartwright, is that this also becomes kind of a tool where this information can be gathered in a more public manner in regards to questions, so that we can be responsive to that. Not necessarily gathering, but providing the opportunities so that that's discussed in a way that, that lots of people can understand it and be able to have something to go forward from that. So, does that make sense?
Yeah. Do you have enough information, Dr. Cartwright?
I do.
All right, thank you. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be August 26th, correct? I think that, I think that data's correct. The last Wednesday in August, I think that that's the 26th, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is. And I would just respectfully request again that the board understands materials will probably not be available until later than normally published on that. Also, just for a common understanding, that a lot of this information is going to be presented to our staff when they return to work, starting next week.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other requests for future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, are there any announcements? Dr. Cartwright?
If I may?
Please?
I implore our community to practice social distancing. Wear the face coverings, wash your hands frequently, and please stay home if you're sick. As a community, we collectively have a large influence on our community data. And that community data is what is going to be driving the district's approach as we go forward in deciding how we will educate and support our children. So, every one of us have a role and responsibility in this. And so, again, I ask for everyone to take it to that level of seriousness. We want our children back in school in a safe environment. And the data will drive what type of environment that's going to be. So, again, just a community message. Again, social distancing, wear a face covering, wash your hands frequently, or use hand sanitizer. And if you're sick, stay home. Don't risk it, don't expose other people to this. And this is a community, so it's not just the adults, it's our, it's our children as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Again, I want to just thank all of the people who emailed, texted, phoned, stopped us on the street, on our dog walks, whatever it was, to provide input. All of it was important, it's all valued. I have to publicly apologize in that I was not able to send a personal message to each and every text or email. The volume was greater than my capacity, and so, I apologize for that. But please know that those emails were opened and they were read, and that they all had an impact. I can, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I can speak for me personally, they did, they did have an impact. We are in this together as a community. Oshkosh is Oshkosh, and I'm very proud of the work of our board and our administration in particular, under Dr. Cartwright's leadership. We've defined as a board what the terms are for getting our students back to school, back in our classrooms where we can provide more services, and they can interact with our great staff. So, thank you to everyone, and especially to Dr. Cartwright and everyone who worked on those various committees. We're very grateful for your work. So, thank you. Any other announcements? All right then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Come on.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Governor?
Aye.
Horazok?
Aye.
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Do we have a turn?
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.